Okay, we're good. Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to our city council meeting for Wednesday, October 23rd. We are going to jump right into our Pledge of Allegiance tonight by Gavin Nyberg.
(inaudible)
Just a couple of notes. Do we have both council members online? So council members Henderson and Hodges are with us online as well, so all five of us are here, just they are joining us online tonight. Turned to go to 4.2, any comments or recognition from the council tonight? Seeing none tonight, we will go on to item 5 tonight, which is our public comment. Audience members at this time may bring any item within the city's purview to the city council's attention. Comments will be limited to two minutes. State law prohibits the council from acting on items that do not appear on the agenda. Public comments for this meeting will also be conducted electronically. Any person interested in addressing the council may submit a comment by emailing recorder at harriman.org or by visiting harriman.org/AgendasAndMinutes where there's a link to fill out an online public comment form. Your statement will be incorporated into the public record.
Mayor, if I might. I think there are going to be some folks that would like to be able to have some public comment on one of our topics later in the meeting.
Okay.
We have, in the past, made arrangements where we will allow for public comment after a presentation is made. Going back to some of our previous conversations where we have had ourselves the experience of feeling a little disenfranchised because all the presentation and all the discussion happens and we just have to sit there.
Right.
I think it's only fair that we make a public comment period available after the presentation, and I'm speaking specifically of item 8.1.
Okay. Okay, I'm open to that.
So if there was anybody that really wanted to speak about that issue, they could kind of hold their comment until that point.
Todd, we can do that then? Okay. Okay. So for the record then, if you're here to speak to 8.1, the intersection, the crosswalk at Harriman Main Street and Harriman Rose, will let you speak later after, so we'll have a presentation on that item, and then you can comment at that point in case you learn anything new in that presentation, so. So I wouldn't comment now on that. If you have anything else, now's the time. So I'll start with, I've got a form here from Gavin Nyberg. If you want to come up, Gavin.
I would like to talk about the DARE program. I was so excited to participate in this program this year. I was very surprised and disappointed when I found out this program was canceled. This year, without any notification to me or anyone that I've talked with, my mom spoke with Sergeant Lopez and found out it's a funding issue. I would like to request that we, as a city, find a way to bring this program back into our schools. Drugs are so prevalent. We need to, we need as much help as we can to stay safe and drug-free. I gathered signatures from 124 students in 4th and 5th grade at Silvercrest, requesting the DARE program be brought back.
Perfect. Thank you, Gavin. We appreciate that. Do you want to address that a little bit? Do you want to address that?
It's challenging me to address.
Right.
It has nothing to do with the merits of the program. You know, I have two children, well, five children, that have all gone through DARE. My oldest son just went through it recently, and I credit some of his experience with DARE, having the courage to go and talk to somebody he cared about and explain to them he didn't want them to be participating in something, and it was pretty amazing to see. And I think he got the courage for that by participating in the DARE program. I think the program is amazing, I'd love to do it. It's just the cost of providing the officers to do those training sessions is a lot. Just, for example, one officer with their vehicle and equipment and everything like that is about $250,000 a year. And so when we have an officer that's, well, two officers involved in multiple schools all the time, those officers are doing that program, and they're not doing the other things that are contributing in other ways towards public safety. And so when we started looking at what our public safety budget was, and the fact that we had already voted on a tax increase just recently, they're just, you know, you get to the bottom of the line and you go, there's just no more money for anything, and the DARE program was the, one of the things that had to kind of fall off.
And Chief, if I could, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, too. I think the one thing that really changed it is there was a state law, Gavin, just so you know, there was a state law that was passed this year that requires an officer now to be in the schools, especially the junior highs. So what, the way our DARE program worked before was, like Officer Jake, who was, was that your officer? Was that your?
Yeah.
Love Officer Jake, right? He was part-time in the junior high, and then he would do the DARE part-time outside of that, in the elementary schools. Because of a state law that was passed last year, we are required now to, he has to be at the junior high, you know, from bell to bell, basically, so he has to be there all day. So to do the DARE program, we would have had to have hired, basically hired another full officer for that, and so it just, it kind of fell victim to some state changes with trying to do, you know, some safety in the schools is what they're trying to aim for. So we just, I mean, unfortunately, because my son, I've got a second grader that I haven't even dared tell him we're dropping this yet, because he comes with me to these programs and he's going to be crushed, right? So I get it. Like, I think we're all saddened by this, to be honest, but...
May I make a suggestion, Gavin? A lot of times, I believe what happens is, we get used to a program that's been instigated by a government entity, right? This is something that's been around for a long, long time. I can sing this song for you, but you don't want to hear me sing it. But I think sometimes what can happen is that if you will talk with your parents and talk with your community, and think about ways that you can have your own type of DARE program at your school, it doesn't mean the officers have to come and instigate this set-out program. There's all kinds of programs that help kids avoid drugs and alcohol. And maybe, maybe take it as an opportunity to start internally thinking, how can we, as a community, work together to solve this problem in our community? Because it's really not a government problem, it's a community problem. So talk to your community and see if there's ways that you can work together to try and instigate programs that help teach kids to avoid those types of things. Because we're restricted on funds, it's just simply how it is, unless we, you know, abundantly tax your parents, and then you probably can't afford to live there at some point, because their taxes will be too high. But look internally at your community and see if you can find out ways to solve the problem.
I'll tell you, the kind of a young man that can go and get 124 signatures and come and talk to his city council about his concerns, that's the kind of young man that can put something like that together.
Amen.
Gavin, hats off to you, buddy, for being here. Like, truly, thank you for doing what you're doing, so. And we could talk more if you'd like, we'd love to, you know, I'd even come visit with you at your house if you want to talk more about this, I'm very open to that, so.
And if money falls out of the sky and we're good, we'll see if we can bring it back.
That's right.
Really, Gavin, thank you.
That's awesome.
Good job.
Okay, any other public comments at this time? Not related to 8.1? Yes, yeah, come forward. Yep, go ahead, come on up here. If you can just state your name for us.
Hi, Allison, my name is Dariana Faria. I am the president of Latinos in Action here at Harriman High School, and I personally wanted to invite the city council and as well as Harriman City. We will be hosting a multicultural event. We know how much culture has impacted Harriman, and how much more, I want to say, more cultures we've gotten as well, and we wanted to have a big celebration to celebrate that as well. So as Latinos in Action, we are hosting a big event, a festival, on November 2nd. It'll be from 2 to 6, and we'd love all the city council and as well as just Harriman City, just as a formal invitation for everyone to go. And it's this big festival, we have different organizations as well coming to come and help us. We have the Columbus Center coming and having a booth. We also have, we're working on having the CEO of Latinos in Actions to come and visit as well, and we'd love for everyone to be there. We're having, as well as just, not just Hispanic cultures, because it's more of like a way to end Hispanic Heritage Month that ended here on the 15th. It's also the Day of the Dead on November 2nd, so it's also a way to celebrate that as well. And I think as a community, we need to push to get those cultures recognized, but we also have People of the Pacific, POP, to help, and as well as BSU, Black Student Union, Asian Student Union, Asian Student Union coming. But yes, we'd love to formally invite you to this multicultural festival.
Where is it?
It's at Harriman High School. It'll be in the quad area, sort of towards the football field, but yes.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. It's on my calendar, so I'll be there. Thank you. Any other comments at this time? Okay, seeing none at this time, we'll move on to our city council reports. Jared. Teddy, anything tonight? Perfect, okay. Sherry?
We had a special meeting with Wasatch Front Waste and Recycling Monday, just to try and look over some budget issues. There's a pretty good short file, they're looking at wanting to do a $6.50 a month increase, which is about $4 more than we've ever done in the past, so. I was struggling a little bit with that. I worry a little bit about how many people have things coming out of everyone's pockets, and it might only be $6.50, but times everybody else, it ends up being a lot. And I, it's a great organization, this is absolutely nothing against the organization, but I, I've asked other members of the council and mayor we've talked about, and I've asked our city manager to maybe start preparing an RFP for garbage, just to make sure we're staying in line with what really the market has available for us, to make sure that we're not, have a better option that would cost our taxpayers less. And so we're going to do that, just to make sure that we're where we should be, so just know that that's coming. So we obviously will be part of the district for foreseeable future for now, and so I'm not positive, the board will vote on that temporary budget on Monday, and then the permanent budget will be voted in a month from now with a public hearing, so if anybody's interested in making comments at that point, that would be appropriate. And then, but I know the sentiment when I left the meeting on Monday was to go forward with the $6.50 a month increase, so that's kind of the nutshell of the garbage board.
Thank you, Sherry. Steve?
No report, just a comment. I spent the last few days in the San Diego area, Southern California, driving around, seeing some sites, doing some stuff, and it was interesting to see how that area deals with certain problems. I saw this really cool thing for high occupancy vehicle lanes, where they actually have this kind of sideways bus thing that goes down the road, is the only way to describe it, and it has just four lanes built in the middle of the highway, and there's a barrier that moves as this bus goes, and it picks it up from here and it drops it off in this lane as it drives along, and moves this whole barrier and shifts it. So there's no lighting, there's no stop, you know, do anything, they just move the barrier as it's going along the road. It was really cool. I saw lots and lots of construction, you know, seems to be the season. Saw a lot of traffic congestion, unbelievable traffic congestion in a few places, you know, eight lanes wide, bumper to bumper, just amazing stuff. And I'll bring that up, just to share that I think it's interesting, because Harriman, 20 years ago, was a very small community, very few traffic lights, not a lot of stuff going on out here, and you fast-forward 20 years and there's been a lot of change really fast, right? And for the folks that have been here a long time, or even maybe have only been here half that time, it's still a lot of rapid change. And I'm not suggesting all that change is wonderful, and all the impacts of that change are delightful, and I think we'd be foolish to call it that. But at the same time, I think a little bit of perspective about how things are in other places and the kind of problems that other places are dealing with. Harriman, in some cases, is a little idyllic. I mean, it's pretty amazing here. We've got an amazing community, we've got great people that live here, awesome facilities, wonderful people. You know, four out of five city council members are really good. They let, they let one of us just come around.
Not sure which one it's...
I'm just, I'm just leaving, I'll let you guys figure that one out. But all in all, it's just a wonderful community, and even as cool as parts of San Diego were, and being down in La Jolla and seeing the beaches, and it's just, I mean, there's a lot of amazing stuff down there, Harriman is still awesome, and it's a great place to be, and I'd rather spend a few minutes in traffic here than a whole lot of minutes in traffic in Southern California, but just perspective of seeing another place and realizing how wonderful Harriman really is, so.
Steve? I'll just summarize a couple of different meetings. It got brought up in LPC Monday, and then as well as in our comm meeting last week. I know there's been a lot of talk about homelessness in a lot of our meetings, and I've brought that up in the past. Hopefully that's going to be changing back again, because the State Committee on Homelessness voted to go back towards the centralized campus model, rather than these satellite models. So that's the direction they're going, so they're now looking for a 30-acre site, I think, along the Wasatch Front to build a permanent homeless, like, space. I mean, it's not just going to be a shelter, there's going to be services and so, but they're getting away from this moving a shelter, temporary shelter every winter, which has just been a stress on everybody trying to find that, and so I think that's a step in the right direction, I think, so.
Mr. Mayor, can I just ask a question out of perspective of some ignorance here?
Mm-hmm.
I'm hoping you could shed some light here. When Chair Stringham and Chief Deputy for the Sheriff's Office came in last week talking about the public safety bond thing they wanted to do for the county, one of the things is they said they identified about 1,000 homeless people was the homeless population in the county. And of that, a certain, some of them are dealing with addiction issues, some of them are dealing with mental health issues, some both, and then some are just, without those issues, still just choosing to be homeless.
Right.
It feels like there is an incredible amount of time and effort and energy and money being spent on the issue, where if you built 1,000 tiny houses, I mean, for the amount of money they're spending, you can order these things on Amazon that pop up in an hour that are $20,000, that are an apartment to house somebody, right?
Yep.
I mean, you could build 1,000 of those and, there's a house.
Right.
Like, there's no more homelessness, you know what I mean?
Right.
Now, that doesn't, that doesn't mean that they're in touch with the resources for addiction issues or, you know, mental health issues and stuff like that, and I understand the need to try and connect those that are the most in need and most ill with those resources as best we can, but it just seems to keep spending tens of millions of dollars year after year after year after year after year, just to keep 1,000 people homeless?
Right.
Like, if homelessness is the issue, just build them the homes and move on, right? We've got it done. And so that's why I'm just trying to figure out, what is, what is the goal around the homelessness issue? Is it to end homelessness?
Right. And that's been brought up, right? That's been brought up at comm and at the state even. I, I mean, I can't speak to that, because we brought that up, and, I mean, I think we finally pushed back enough, because they were, it was $50 million a year they were putting in these winter resource centers, you know, to, you know, to fix up a hotel, so now at least...
For 1,000 people.
1,000 people, 50 million a year.
It's a little bit different, because they're, 1,000 are homeless, but then, is a different trigger that comes to the blue, they call it Code Blue, right? Code Blue is, like, they have to accept anybody if it gets below 18 degrees Fahrenheit, like, anybody, they can't turn anybody away into these shelters. So that's not, it could be homeless, but there could be other situations where, you know, but to your point, yeah, we've pushed back on, you know, Wayne Niederhauser is heading that committee up, I think he's finally steering that in a new direction, away from this and trying to get to the root of it. It's a, it's a state thing that I, like, honestly, the only reason we get involved at comm is because we were tasked as a comm with, like, it was COG, was to find that temporary resource center.
Yeah, find the place, right, yeah.
Once this goes away, I don't know if we'll ever deal with it at the county level again, like, that, at COG, it'll go back to a state situation, but I think those are questions that absolutely need to be asked, you know? So I know, I know Salt Lake is doing some housing project right now that's supposed to be for that, you know, so they're trying to build those kind of units, you know, with taxpayer money to build that, but again, is it, could it possibly save money, though, rather than these millions, so? Nope, that's a fair question.
It just is, I mean, I'm...
I was just going to do the same.
I mean, we're spending 50,000 a year per homeless person.
Right.
You could spend half that and just build the houses.
Right.
I mean, that doesn't mean there's, there's not ongoing operation of maintenance and costs and cleaning, and, like, I get it, but...
Right.
That's a lot of money for, for not...
Every year.
Not, I mean, you have that up over 10 years, and, like, that's...
The house, yep, that's paying for the house.
The money!
Just put it in perspective, they're spending more of a year on that than our city budget is.
Right. Yeah.
Yep.
And we've got 60,000 people to take care of.
Right. Yep.
Okay, just saying, sorry.
Fair point, yep. Nope, I appreciate the question. Appreciate the question. You should run for senate. Just saying.
Remember the, think about the one city council member, the...
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, we're going to move on to item 8.1, results of the traffic signal warrant study at the intersection of Harriman Main and Harriman Rose. Bryce? And again, for those here to speak about this, we'll have the presentation and then we'll have comment after this.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council. So, yeah, a little background to how we got to a traffic signal warrant study at the intersection of Harriman Rose and Harriman Main Street. John, this isn't moving on, do I need to turn it on? We got it, it's working. Thanks.
Leave it to the engineer.
So this is the area, so that's Main Street coming down, and then Harriman Rose Boulevard is the minor street, we call it, and then on the north side of the road is an access into the restaurant, rec center area and library area. So like I said, here's, here's a little bit more zoomed-in view of the area that we're discussing today. One of the big considerations in this area is that in the past, the school crosswalk for Silvercrest Elementary, which is in that picture right there, has always crossed Harriman Main Street here at Harriman Rose Boulevard. At Harriman Rose Boulevard, there is no traffic control device, meaning there's no stop sign for Harriman Main Street traffic or a traffic signal. There is advisory lights, which are, we call RFBs, to alert people, hey, someone's trying to cross here in the crosswalk, and it alerts drivers, but it doesn't actually control traffic, there's not a red light that stops traffic. And so based on the crossing guard feedback, engineering observations, HPD observations, working with the school administration, this school year, that safe walk route was relocated to Harriman Main Street and Black Locust, which is on the right end of this picture right there. So it is about 650 feet from the existing kind of intersection that we're talking about is an existing traffic signal. And so in, in, the recommendation was to move it to that location to be able to cross Harriman Main Street, one of our busier roads, at a traffic signal where there is that red light to stop movement, and in this case, there's actually a red light in every direction, so there's no movement going on during this crossing. So it stops all the traffic. Now, there's, in our recommendation, that it was a safer location to cross Harriman Main Street. We, we had a public open house, and there was a lot of concern with this, this decision to move the safe walk route to Black Locust instead of at Harriman Rose, and, and there were, was more discussion than just the safe walk route that came up, right? There was discussion about, well, the intersection itself just needs to be considered for improvement, whether that be a traffic signal roundabout enhancements of some, some form. And so based on this feedback and some of the discussions, we decided to perform a traffic signal warrant study for this intersection. And I'll kind of get into why, why is there a warrant study even before you install a traffic signal, but a little bit background, we looked back in 2021 at a, at a warrant study at this location, and at that time, the traffic volumes did not meet the warrants that are, are set for installing a traffic signal. So with that background, I'll, I'll jump into kind of why warrants, but I can answer any questions up to this point, too.
I should just explain two things. Number one, because I'm just going to make sure this is something everybody can reference, right?
Okay.
So number one, who is responsible for choosing the safe walking route?
So there's really not one party that's, that's the decider, it's a collection of four parties, so. The city kind of has two parts to this, our police department has a signature on the line, engineering from the city also has a line, then school administration, so Silvercrest Administration has a line to sign, and then Jordan School District has a line to sign. And the school administration is supposed to get their input from the school community council. So there's a school community council, as many of you know, that is, one of its main purposes is to discuss the safe walk route for the school, provide feedback, provide suggestions, and then between the four parties, we all come to an agreeance on what makes the most sense, what's the safest route in our mind on how to get to school. And so, yeah, it's kind of a shared decision at that point. Engineering and HPD, we have a lot of the technical background to make recommendations, but the school administration has the school community council to receive that feedback that they're hearing from, from their community. So it's, it's a collection of those four that end up signing the final document to say this is the safe walk route, and then it actually goes to the state to, to be in record and to finalize, so.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that was on the record, so everybody understood who is involved in making that decision and making the change that happened.
Yeah, yeah, so, and, and in this case, this has been an ongoing discussion with the school specifically for, at least ever since I've kind of oversaw the engineering department, and even beyond then, it's been an ongoing discussion for the last five years on how do we handle this? There is an issue that we want to address, what's the best way to address it, and so that's, that's where we got to where we are today.
If I can ask a question, 1A to that, before I move on to the second question, is, can you define for me what safe walking route means?
Yeah, that, well, there's, there's, there's several definitions, right? But what we're looking for, and HPD always says this as well, is it's the safest way to get from wherever the student is coming from, from their home to the school, and that's using our existing infrastructure, right? So in this case, it was looking at, okay, where's this, our biggest obstacle, obstacle in this case is crossing a really busy road, Harriman Main Street, right? And what's the best way to get to the school? Now, we do try to consider, okay, what's a reasonable amount away from the school or from the school to detour, right? That's a big concern, but the main concern is how, what's the safest route to get to school? It may not be the most convenient, and, but it, what is the safest route based on our understanding and our recommendations at that time?
So it is the safest option among the variable options that are existing with the infrastructure that we have today?
Yeah, yeah, that's a good summary.
I just, I did not hear you say that the safe walking route is a guaranteed free for... from any dangers or issues.
Correct. A, a common, a common question that comes up is, in some areas, we don't have sidewalk installed, but we still establish a safe walk route to school. So in some cases, students may have to walk on the shoulder of a road that has no curb, no, no gutter, but we're just trying to establish the best route for students to get to school and establish areas where they can come and cross with crossing guards. And so that's a big part of the safe walk route is where can the crossing guards get kids across a busy street and, and safely to school? But, yeah, in some areas in, in Herriman, there are no sidewalks on either side of the road, and there, the safe walk route just has to be, they call it a, a narrow school safe walk route, and they're not walking on, on sidewalk or have any kind of protection from the road besides just walking on the shoulder, so.
Not ideal, but, I just, again, I'm asking all these questions because I want people who are maybe listening at home or who may have questions about these things to get some authoritative answers about specifics.
Yeah, yeah, and I think that, that, that's really helpful for us because I've kind of fast forward to today, but there's a lot that goes into before we got to today.
Exactly, so I appreciate your patience. Okay, question number two is, can you explain what a warrant study is? What is it that you're studying?
Yeah.
Why, and what does warrant mean?
That's actually a, a perfect transition to my next slide. So, a traffic signal warrant study, so there's several different warrant studies established by, and let me take a step back on how we, we got to warrant studies. So, the manual on uniform traffic control devices, it's, we call it the MUTCD for short, so if I say MUTCD, it's referencing this book that's on this, this page here. It's a manual that the federal government adopts and actually mandates that each state must have their, either adopt the same federal manual or adopt one of their own that is substantially the same as the federal requirements in this book. And so, this book is essentially the standard for all public roadways, and actually, I'll amend that, any road that has public traffic. So they, they actually define that in this book, that private roads that aren't gated still need to follow the MUTCD. So this, the MUTCD sets up how the road should be striped, how it should be signed, when a traffic signal should be installed, and the intent behind that is that we're, as it says in there, you're, you're uniform no matter where you are at. If, so if you travel from Herriman to St. George, all the signs, the stop signs should all look the same, they should be placed in, in the same manner, the striping should look the same, nothing should be confusing, even if you travel from Utah to California to, to Washington DC. We're having a uniform traffic control devices that doesn't confuse anyone, that, that we're consistent across the country. And, and like I said, this is a, a federal document, but it's also adopted by the states individually. And so, this book is what establishes, or this manual is what establishes for all kind of engineering of roads, kind of sets up the standards that are kind of minimums to meet for cities, states, federal highways. And in this book, there are ways to warrant or justify, we'll say justify, installing a, a traffic signal. And that, there's, there's a reason for these warrants, right?
So again, when you're, you're saying, the reason I'm making a big deal about this is because in engineering terms, you guys use words all the time that the rest of us are going, I don't know what they're talking about. Warrants, I think, is one of these issues, right? And this is gonna be a big thing is, um, you know, in common parlance, we use words like, is something warranted? It's the same word that we're trying to use here, but essentially, is it justified? Is it?
Qualified.
Qualified, is it meeting, meeting the necessary requirements, right? Those kinds of things. So that's what we're talking about, so when you're doing a warrant study, you're studying if the installation of a certain traffic device is justified, meets the standards, if it's okay to do so, kind of thing.
Yes, that, again, I, I am enjoying your ability to summarize what I'm saying concisely, so, so thank you for that.
Not everybody does, but I appreciate it.
And from the non-engineering standpoint, I'm sure it's helpful, so. So why do we even consider these warrants or these qualifications before we install a, in this case, a traffic signal? So if you can imagine your drive to work, your commute to work, or commute to anywhere, where are you most delayed? It's at traffic signals or intersections. That's where the most crashes occur, where most of the delays are, are waiting at a red light, right? And it stacks up and there's congestion. Generally, your delays aren't gonna be in between intersection and in, in between intersection, the roadway segments, unless there's a, a major crash or one of those intersections has actually backed up to, to, to bring you that far. The other areas, like on I fifteen, sometimes it just meets capacity and gets overloaded where there's just so much traffic that the capacity of the road can't function anymore and, and you see delays there. But one of the, the, the biggest delays in driving is at a traffic signal. Now, traffic signals are great for improving the ability to get in and out of a subdivision or in and out of a, a location and improve the ability for vehicles to move within a intersection. And they, they are, they can be efficient, right? Not, not every traffic signal is failing, right? Not every traffic signal needs to be a major delay on, on your travel, but there is that consideration that when you do install any kind of delay to, to a drive or to a commute, drivers can get frustrated in, in congestion, right? Where there's, there's a lot of road rage laws that are being considered this year, but that can be caused not just by other drivers, but by the delay that they're experiencing. And so, based on this, we only want to install traffic signals where they are warranted or justified. We don't want to overuse these traffic signals and add it undue delay and then create frustrated drivers who make poor decisions. We, we've found in studies that the more frustrated drivers are, generally their decision capabilities lower. And, and so because of this, there's got to be some, some way to kind of warrant or qualify when a traffic signal makes sense, so we're not putting them on every intersection, right? There's also the right time to install a traffic signal just based on optimizing the safety of the area. If a traffic signal is used improperly, it can create more issues than it solves. If there's not proper sight distance, if people are not obeying the, the traffic signal because they're fed up of having to go through so many traffic signals, if they're too closely spaced together, drivers get upset and try to go really fast in between those signals. So, so there is some concerns that we're using a traffic signal in the right manner and in the right location. So that's why we kind of, there is a, a national established standard on, on traffic signal warrants. Additionally, it establishes a standard on when it is safe to install a traffic signal. So if we, as a city, go out and say, hey, we're gonna step outside the national standard or even the state standard, we are at risk of putting ourselves in litigation situations, right? We, we've stepped out of the general practice norm to do something else, there's an accident or a crash, now it's on us to answer why we didn't follow the national researched, studied standards.
Bryce, can I, can I ask one question about that?
Yeah.
This is an obvious question. It doesn't mean that we can't, is that correct?
Correct, correct, yes.
We can go away from these standards.
Yes, and, and you'll see in the recommendation.
But we invite risk, we invite potential litigation if we do something.
Yeah, engineers will, will generally always recommend that we stay with the traffic signals for these reasons, right? But if the city council chose to step outside of those warrants and, and that is their, their ability, your ability to do, to direct staff to install the traffic signals, it would be outside of engineering recommendations. And then, lastly, one of, justifying a, a traffic signal, there's also a responsible use of funds that we have to think about. Like I said, we can't install a traffic signal at every, at every intersection, we have to consider the ones that need it most, and we need to be fair all across the city. Just because we have a, a loud resident in this side of the city that is able to get the ear of, of, of engineering or whoever it is, we should be able to look at that intersection unbiased to any other intersection in the city so that we're using these funds responsibility that are, are taxpayer dollars. So, yeah, that's kind of the, the reason why warrants were established, and now I can kind of jump into what those warrants look like, unless there's any questions up to this point. Okay, so the, the results, so this is kind of a summary of the results, and I'll kind of give an example of this. So there are nine ways to warrant a traffic signal according to that MUTCD manual. One through three, which is the most common and generally why a traffic signal is installed, is based on the traffic volume at the intersection. That's considering the major road traffic and also the minor road, and a combination of when does it make sense, when is the road too busy to be able to turn out safely and make a, a good decision, turning left, going straight, turning right, right? From the minor stop roads. So, um, and then there's, and I'll, I'll jump into, because that's kind of the meat of the analysis, I'll jump into that at the end after I cover these other warrants. Pedestrian activity is also considered. I will say the pedestrian warrants for a traffic signal are extremely hard to meet. For example, to meet a, a warrant for pedestrians for a traffic signal, you need about three hundred students, or not students, pedestrians crossing in an hour. And that's, that's for peak hour. There's another way to warrant, that is a four-hour warrant, that there needs to be at least a hundred and fifty pedestrians crossing the crosswalk that we're considering for a signal for at least four hours of the day. So that's a pedestrian kind of a warrant. And then warrant six and eight, I've grouped them together because they're very closely related. There is, if we're, you're looking at like a transit system where you need to get buses through or any kind of signal priority for certain vehicles, that could be a reason to warrant, to, to say, yeah, we need to get buses through, the buses have, uh, the hardware built into the bus to talk to the signal, and at this intersection, we keep getting stopped, we keep seeing issues, that's, that's a warrant. Or when we do our transportation master plan, where we are using all these projections in the area, we're, we're putting all of the traffic data in and saying, hey, this is an area that is gonna be an issue. And so your transportation master plan can warrant a traffic signal. And so in this, in this case, we didn't meet any of those needs, it's not in our transportation master plans because it wasn't foreseen in the traffic modeling that a, a signal would needed, would need to be here. Warrant seven is crashes, the crash data, right? We want to improve the safety of the intersection because we're seeing a, a series of crashes that could be solved by a, a traffic signal. So in this case, the warrant for that is if there's five crashes in the intersection that we're talking about that could be solved by a traffic signal, that is a reason to warrant a traffic signal. In this case, in, in the last year, I should say, so five crashes in the last year. In this case, there was one crash in the last year that could have been solved by a, a traffic signal, it was a minor crash, no major injury or anything, just a property damage vehicle. And so that didn't warrant. And then warrant nine is when you have a railroad crossing. So you've all seen, there's, there's signals there that control traffic when a, a railroad is crossing a road. And so we, we don't have any of that actually anywhere in Herriman, a railroad crossing a, a public road. So, um, now let me jump back to the traffic volume and just kind of give you an idea of what we're looking for in that, and I'll try to go slow or not too much information, but if we want to deep, deep, dive, dive deeper, we can. So like I said, there's three warrants for traffic volume. On the left here, it's, it's a lot of information, and so, like I said, we can dive deeper as needed. On the left is us collecting vehicle traffic, we have traffic counters that count the traffic every hour of the day, and we have the, in this case, we had it set up for ten days to collect traffic volume, and then we look at the busiest days to have the best chance at warranting. So, within those three warrants, there's an eight-hour warrant, which means they have to meet eight hours out of the day, they need to meet this number to warrant a traffic signal. So in this case, we look at the major road, Herriman Main Street or the busier road, the minor road on Herriman Rose, and we look at those hourly volumes and compare them to the numbers that are required by the warrant. So, warrant one, for example, the eight-hour volume, the minor road, and this is on one leg of the minor road, needs to have a hundred and fifty vehicles per hour coming into the intersection. And, uh, on the major road, it needs to have at least six hundred vehicles coming into the intersection. So, combine, we, we combine the major volume together from the east side and the west side of the, the road, because those turning left or turning straight have to fight both of that traffic to get out. So in this case, you need eight hours, and you can see where I've highlighted the numbers. That's where we're meeting the warrant for at least one hour, but we have to meet it in both categories, both on the major street and on the minor, minor street. So on the minor street, and let me take a step back, there's a lot of information here that, so there's two parts to this warrant. So although I said there's nine warrants, there's really ten, because this one can be warranted in two different ways. We, um, on A, warrant one A, we allow, or the warrant needs a certain amount of volume on the major road, which we meet, that's six hundred vehicles per hour. If you look at the combined column, there's about, there's, there's easily eight hours, and in this case, there's actually fourteen hours of when we warrant that on the major road. But then you go to the minor road, and it needs a hundred and fifty vehicles a day, and you can look at that minor, northbound is the Herriman Rose intersection there on the left column under the minor road, Herriman Rose. We're not hitting a hundred and fifty in any case, any part of the day. So then you, you go to another warrant that is a little bit more forgiving on, or a, a little less harder to hit on the minor road, but it's a, it's a higher hit on the major road, so seventy-five, and that's what we're looking at on the highlights here on, on warrant one B, which is you only need seventy-five vehicles in an hour to warrant, but you also need nine hundred vehicles in the same hour to warrant. And so that's the highlight there. There's one case of this happening at about the peak hour, which is about six PM at night, right? Everyone's coming home from work, going out to eat, kind of that, that makes sense as our, our evening peak hour. But it doesn't do this eight different times throughout the day, just once. So that doesn't warrant. Warrant two is similar, but you have to do it for four hours of the day, and we don't, we, we don't do this any, any part of the day, not once. And then peak hour, warrant three, is you just have to do it one time, one hour out of the day, but the numbers are much higher because we're justifying a signal just for one hour of the day, uh, these issues coming up. And so, um, on that case, we're not meeting that any of the time. The major road, Herriman Main Street meets it, but then the minor road doesn't.
And Bryce, just to verify, these warrant one, two, and three A and B, these are all about the volume of vehicles going through, traffic has nothing to do with pedestrians?
Correct, correct, yep, yep. So this, one through three is all traffic volume. So these are the different ways you can warrant through traffic volume, and this is just showing, we're, we're getting close on some of them, but on other ones, we're, we're far off. And so, um, I think, and, and we'll get into this, the, the recommendation based on all of our studies, and we have a lot of data, a lot of information, I feel like we've already probably overshared on how much data that, that we collect in this process. But based on the last slide where we didn't meet any of the warrants in the, the MUTCD, we do not recommend installing a traffic signal at this time.
Ken, I want to ask you a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Ian, the, if you can go back to the other, the one before this, where the warrants are here.
Yeah.
Okay, so in regards to the pedestrian activity, we don't necessarily need to go through all of it, but how far off are we on the counts of where you needed to be at all during those times? I mean, are, are we close, are we way off?
Yeah, and, and this is kind of a, a, a gray, I wouldn't say a gray area, but a difficult thing to quantify, right? We, by warrant, we're just counting how many people are crossing the road at that time. Now, there's always an argument that says, well, of course, no one's crossing the road right now because there is no traffic signal and it's not safe. But by warrant, we're just collecting the amount that are crossing today at that location. And like I said, for a four-hour period, you need a hundred and fifty pedestrians for four different hours of the day to warrant. We, at most, and that's when school gets out, are around fifty-ish. Now, that did change, obviously, with the school. Now, that did change obviously with the school crossing moving from one intersection to the next.
Okay. I'm going to ask this question, and again, I'm going to ask a lot of questions because I want to get all this data out as much as we can here.
Okay.
How many pedestrians are we crossing at the crossing guard walk of a Black Locus during some of those peak hours? And I know it's a little unrelated, but...
Yeah, I don't know the exact number off of the top of my head. We can ask, we actually do an audit of our crossing locations every year and we're about to do that here in the next week or two. So I could bring back that information. I don't have the amount at the existing traffic signal, how many we cross. I, I'm not sure what that number is.
Do you know what the number was from a previous warrant when we were crossing at this intersection, what the pedestrian traffic was?
I don't know off the top of my head, but we could pull up that old study in 2021 and, and look at it.
Yeah, and again, I'm not trying to have any extra grind here. I'm just trying to make sure that we're asking all the questions that everybody wants to ask, right?
Yeah.
I mean, whether they're at home or they're here, that we know there's a lot of people living in the neighborhood around here who are like, well, tell me what that means and why didn't you ask this and what's going on?
Yeah.
So I'm trying to ask as many of these questions as I can to, to try and help get answers, okay? So the reason I'm asking about the, the traffic at the different crosswalk is if there was crossing at this intersection, would it be a warranted intersection? Does that make sense?
Right, and, and warrant four is just straight pedestrian activity. Warrant five is specifically for school crossings. And there's some recommendations in there that even if a pedestrian, generally pedestrians aren't the reason a traffic signal is installed, it can be, but there are other treatments that should be explored before you install a traffic signal just for pedestrians. One of those is a...
IE, moving at 630 feet down the street.
Yes, moving the crosswalk, using reduced school speed zones, which we had before, using crossing guards, these are all recommendations, using a pedestrian signal, a HOCC signal that's just controlling pedestrian crossings and not the full movement, right? So there are alternatives that are, and recommended to be considered, even if this pedestrian warrant, warrants, that those should be explored before installing a traffic signal for just pedestrian use. So, yeah. Did that answer the question?
Yeah, yeah, that's good. In all of these, is there any warrant that cross references traffic and pedestrians at a same hour? Does that make sense? Meaning if you're at 600 cars and two pedestrians, that's not a big thing, but if you're at 600 pedestrians and two cars, that's a different thing, right? So is there, is there any warrant where the combination of pedestrians and traffic together would warrant an intersection?
Yeah, no, that's a really good question that I kind of failed to cover. So the pedestrian warrant does consider the amount of traffic. The busier the road, the less pedestrians you need, right? So they are combined in this pedestrian, and I said 150 for four different hours and then about 300 for the peak hour. That's based on the main street traffic that we're seeing out there.
So at those traffic levels, the five, six, seven, eight, 100, whatever cars there are?
Yeah, if it, if it was a even busier road, then that, those numbers for amount of pedestrians needed would be lower. Or if it was a really light traffic road, the need for pedestrians would go higher because the opportunity for conflict is higher when you have more of either option, right?
And do you consider peak pedestrian traffic? Will you go back to the slide that shows the number, the traffic counts? So if, like at eight o'clock in the morning, or nine o'clock in the morning, you're at 300 to 400, which doesn't meet the major road warrant study?
Mm-hmm.
And then when school gets out, I don't know what time school gets out, like maybe three o'clock?
Yeah.
So you're, you're at 400. So, so on that, you wouldn't, you, you don't have the traffic count at the times the pedestrian would be high. Do they have to meet that 600, the 900?
Yeah, so it's, it's a graph that is like a curved line that essentially says, if you have this much traffic during that hour, say in this case, it's the combined traffic of the two directions on Main Street, we'll go to, yeah, three o'clock, let's say. So that's in this case, 15 o'clock, we'll say.
Seven seventy-eight.
15 hours. We're at, yeah, 778 for Main Street. Based on that number, the pedestrian count needs to be this to warrant. And so it's a graph based on how much traffic they're having to cross, that the pedestrian warrant goes up and down.
And there was nothing in the graph that shows that it would warrant that?
Correct, yeah. We're, we're under all of the, the warrants for these hours. So back to recommendations. So based on not warranting any of the warrants that are out there to warrant a traffic signal, we do not recommend installing a traffic signal at this intersection at this time. Now, like I said, some of these warrants are getting close, they're not meeting, and Herriman Main Street is just going to get busier and busier. So we want to continue to monitor it. Compared to 2021, we moved a lot closer. I'd say we're probably 75% of the volumes, if I had to kind of give an overall, that we need to warrant a, a traffic signal at this location. But that doesn't mean that we drop the issue completely, right? We do need to look at the concerns that have been brought up, meet with the community members to discuss alternative solutions outside of a traffic signal. And we'd recommend meeting with them to discuss kind of what are the main concerns? Is it crossing the road? Is it pulling out of the intersection? Is it site distance? Is it speed? All of these things can be addressed in different ways that maybe not with a traffic signal, but maybe with some traffic calming, we could install a driver feedback sign, we could trim some trees or remove some trees that are blocking movement as you're pulling out of the intersection. We have some, identified some trees in the center median as, I can go back to the aerial, but there's a center median there that has some trees that we could trim or even remove to improve the site distance as you're looking to pull out of the intersection. So you can see further down the road than you can today if we remove those trees.
Is there ever a time that warrants, I know there has to be because sometimes I drive someplace and I go to turn, I can't turn there anymore, now there's a cement thing there. But is there any time that warrants that says it's just no longer safe to have an intersection?
So, and, and that's maybe one of the alternative solutions, that if we're feeling that the biggest concern and issue is that people can't safely turn left out of the neighborhood, there is recommendations in MUTCD to look at restricting the left turn movement. So that might be putting in a median, maybe continuing the median straight through, restricting left movements completely and straight through movements because at, at this time, we feel like that's the biggest concern and the safest way to address that is to continue. Now, there's a cost and, and we'd have to look at the implications of doing that, right? It might solve, solve one problem and cause us more problems somewhere else.
At least.
So yes, there are alternative solutions that we haven't discussed today. This warrant was focused on a traffic signal. We're saying we don't recommend a traffic signal, but we do recommend looking at some other improvements. We don't, we haven't identified what those are and we'd like to meet with the community one more time to really identify where the biggest issues in, are with the intersection and nail those down and how we can, how we can address those specific concerns.
Yeah, if I, I think that's an important point to make because that's part of the, what I, if we're going to follow these recommendations and meet with community members and do the things they've talked about, is I'm not 100% sure the problem that the traffic signal was supposed to fix. Does that make sense?
Right.
I don't know if it's traffic getting in and out, I don't know if it's pedestrian crossing, I don't know if it's school safe walk route, I don't know if it's a combination of all of those things. Speeds, you know, there's, there's a whole lot of, of areas of concern and I'm trying to figure out what those specifically are and perhaps enumerate those. So there's, well, I can't address this one and this one, but maybe we could do, you know, D, E, and F here or something like that. Does that make sense?
Yes, that's, that's exactly the intent. Yep, to identify where we can address the, the major concerns, what we can do, how we can help the, the community and this intersection specifically, and identify those concerns and address them in, in alternative solutions.
Okay.
Okay, let's do public comment. And that, give us some more feedback on what you presented and then we can kind of discuss more amongst ourselves and bring you back up if we need to. So this time, if you have public comment, if you come up and share your name, and then you'll have two minutes.
Hello, my name is Cheristy Nyberg, and we've lived in the neighborhood for 11 and a half years. Try and spit this out real quick in my two minutes. So first off, I feel like the, a huge part of the issue is, is that there's not been good communication. This came down without any notification to the neighborhood that this was happening. So there was no public comment or input on any of it. I didn't even know the school community council existed until I came to that meeting where we were told what the new safe walk route was. And we thought we were coming to discuss it, not that it had already been decided. I then ran for and I'm now on the school community council so I can hopefully have some way to improve things moving forward because communication is not getting out to people. So people have no idea what's going on. So I think that a huge part of the pushback on this is no one was involved in that discussion. Secondly, I will say that it is a combination of all of the issues that, Mr. Shields, that you brought up. It is, we can't get in and out of the neighborhood safely. The traffic, when it was all being counted, I'm pretty sure there was construction on some of those days where it was narrowed down to one lane each way on Main Street, so people avoided it. I know I did. We can't get out of the intersection at peak time, so we drive around different ways because we can't go turn left out of there. So that's probably a lot of the reason why you're not getting numbers high enough. Again, also the pedestrian count, the kids all have to go to Black Locus now for school instead of straight across where we're used to. So you're not going to get the count because those of us who are encouraging our kids to follow the rules, they're going all the way to Black Locus and it's making it a lot longer. There's a lot more parents driving their kids to school because it's a lot longer for the kids to get there. And I just feel like we need a lot more community input. I realize this isn't impacting everyone and there are other places in the city, as was brought up, right, that probably need help too. But that doesn't mean that our concerns should not be addressed as well as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Well said.
Thank you.
My name is Lacey Taylor. Just a couple notes that I took. I also ran for the school community council along with Cheristy and we both were elected, so we're excited to make differences where we can. Something that they mentioned was that the plan was presented at a subcommittee meeting, not to the whole council, and that the, when they spoke to us about it, that the police brought the plan and said, this is what it is. So I don't know how much communication actually went into making the plan. If you go to Utah or saferroutes.utah.gov, it talks about the school leadership officials having an important say in what happens. It says, "The goal of Safe Routes is to help children get to and from school safely while motivating children to experience the benefits of walking or biking to school. School leadership officials have a significant influence on the way students travel to and from school. Policies, procedures, and projects can be promoted at the school and district level that address concerns, improve safety, increase physical activity, encourage students to walk and bike more often." I know we had a lot of kids mention popped wheels. I have not let my kids ride their bikes just because that's my number one concern there, but, and also just that roadway not having a reduced speed limit. I had called an engineering department prior to the study being started and I asked them if they were going to count the traffic from the school to the restaurant because all of that foot traffic would have come through Main and could have been thought about. And they said they would consider it. I didn't hear that it was addressed. Some other things to consider, could be considered later, but the speed limit was one that I would like to be considered. I also want to point out that the school community council, they pointed out that our school is the only all-walking school in Herriman. That's why this is different. All, there's no buses coming to our school. All students that are walking to school, that is, there's no bus option. So that's why there's more foot traffic and I think why we see more of a prevalent need. I think our purpose for the warrant study was to help explore options available to us. And if you look at the old studies for foot traffic, that study happened when numbers were low because kids weren't at school because of COVID. So I think that has to be considered as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Lacey.
Hi, my name is David Pruitt. I have some comments, but also some questions that hopefully can be addressed. One question, so I was reading the MUTCD and in warrant five, specifically regarding, regarding cruel, school crossings, it says, "If an engineering study determines that the number of gaps in traffic during the period when the schoolchildren are using the crossing is less than the number of minutes in the same period, and there are a minimum of 20 schoolchildren during the highest crossing hour, then that would be warranted." Kind of find it hard to believe that that warrant was not met. So that was one thing that I wanted to ask about. Another question that I had was, so in the MUTCD, you need warrants for traffic lights, you also need warrants for stop signs. I didn't hear anything about whether this warrant study looked into stop signs because stop signs require, there's a much lower bar for stop signs. So that's another thing I was wondering about. And the final thing is more of a comment. So stop signs and traffic lights have to be warranted. Roundabouts do not. Roundabouts, according to the MUTCD, are a design decision and they do not require warrants. I know roundabouts can be more expensive than traffic lights, but they don't have to be. There are very low-cost options for roundabouts. And roundabouts have been repeatedly demonstrated to be much safer than traffic lights. So I would hope, as a city council, that as you go about looking at solutions, that we really heavily consider roundabouts, especially with regard to that other solution that was mentioned earlier about restricting left turns by installing a median, roundabout would be a much better solution than restricting left turns by installing a median. So that's it.
Thank you, David.
Let me just ask a couple of quick things. First of all, Bryce, if you could address those two questions. Number one, that subcategory of warrant five about the gaps in traffic versus being less than the number of minutes in the crossing, was that evaluated?
So, under the, the school crossing warrant, there's some guidelines essentially that it has to be part of the safe walk route, which as of today, it's not, right? But it was previously. So that warrant wouldn't apply today because it's not part of the safe walk route. The safe walk route doesn't cross there. Doesn't mean we didn't consider it because we know that it, that's the desire, right? And that's what it, what it has been. But that warrant also specifies that there should be other, this should be only considered when other recommendations or alternative solutions aren't, aren't met. So an example of this is if you've ever been on Juniper Crest Road and where Patriot Ridge and Mount Ogden Peak merge, the, the road is massive. The crosswalk is, I think, 150 feet from ADA ramp or curb ramp to curb ramp. And the traffic volumes did not warrant a traffic signal there, but the school crosswalk did because, and I'll get back to kind of that, that question, there was no other alternative for the pedestrians to get to, in this case, Providence Elementary, Providence High School, Providence Middle School. The closest signal was, I, I don't know off the top of my head, but it's nowhere near that signal. So when we're considering a warrant for a school crossing, we first consider, can they go to a existing traffic signal close by and cross there at that location rather than warrant the intersection a traffic signal just for school crossing? So that, that is, there's two parts to that. That is what we considered, that there was a, an alternative solution to find a, a cross across Main Street at a traffic signal. In the case of the, of Providence Elementary and Providence Schools, there was no reasonable detour to get across Juniper Crest in this case. So that signal, we do look at the school crossing warrant, but it has to kind of justify itself that there's no other way, no other reasonable alternative route for schools.
600-foot move is seen as a...
Yeah, in this case, it's, yeah, 650 feet from one, well, to the, where the crossing was to the, the next signal. So that's for school crossing and then, yeah, there was a second...
My second question is, in regards to roundabouts, having lived in Daybreak for a while, I've had with a lot of those in Southern. I, I know generally speaking, roundabouts are, can be a really positive solution for traffic flow. traffic flow.
Yeah.
What information do we have about the intersection of roundabouts with pedestrian crossings?
Yeah, so, so roundabouts, as, as have been said, they reduce the likelihood of conflicts. There's no left turns crossing in front of someone that's going straight, right? So the conflict points in a roundabout or potential conflicts are much lower than a traditional intersection. With that said, the, a roundabout to function well has to be sized correctly. And so in this case, you would need a multi-lane roundabout to accommodate all the traffic on Harriman Main Street. So the size of this roundabout gets to be kind of what you're talking about in Daybreak. Some of their roundabouts are multi-lanes, roundabouts. And multi-lane roundabouts are good for flow in, in certain cases, looking at the, where the traffic's coming. If it's all in one direction, it's not so good. If you have pretty good equivalency of traffic, it can work well. But the constraint of the geometry or the size of the roundabout is what would be, one concern here is you might be eating into a home. You might be eating into school property to make this work. And when it's that big, it's hard for vehicles to look for pedestrians when they don't have to stop. That's kind of the, the basis of a traffic signal versus why we move them to a traffic signal. They have a red light, they have to stop. Then the, the pedestrian light goes on, then they walk. So in a large roundabout, there's mixed results on if it's safer for pedestrians to cross because if you can imagine, you enter into the roundabout, you have multi-lanes, you're looking at the next approach to make sure someone's not coming in front of you. And then if you're trying to exit through, that crosswalk's on the other side of the road while you're still going 25 miles an hour. And if you're not specifically looking for those pedestrians, it can be an, a situation that doesn't increase the safety for pedestrians.
And that's, that would be to be determined, you know, with a lot of things here.
Right.
I'm, I'm just asking in general, just because I think it's important for us to understand, there are always gives and takes with some of these, like, you install a light or you install a roundabout or you do something, you could maybe solve one problem, but you could be making other problems worse, right?
Correct.
And so we want to try and maximize solutions, minimize complications, right, as we're going through some of these.
Exactly, exactly, yep.
Sorry, I apologize.
It's the same as with even continuing the median and allowing no left turns. It's like, yeah, that solves the left turn problem, but it creates other, other problems.
Yeah, you'll have a lot of right turns now going and flipping a U-turn, right?
You have to really analyze and understand how it's the best.
Yeah, yeah, there's, we'd like to say there's a simple solution for it all, but there isn't. And so we have to kind of identify what the highest priorities are and address those.
And that's what I was saying about the enumerating what those specific things are and that's why I appreciated your comments, Ms. Nyberg, about that. It's a combination of a lot of different things, so I, that's going to be a great conversation to have with you.
And David, I see you kind of shaking your head. That, that can be a conversation as we move forward, right? As we come back to the community for those conversations, that, there's no reason that can't be discussed, looked at, right? So just, just know that we're, because we have some concerns now, doesn't mean that that can't be discussed down the road. Like, I think our first step was, let's do what, see what the light study says so we know, right? So we could know. And then to the point that's been made, I think there has been some concern. We've even talked internally about the communication, what could we have done better, right? I think we're all, like, we all kind of ran on that when we ran for office about transparency. So it's, I think that that feedback's gotten to us, I think crushed us, if I'm being honest. I think it all, because we ran on that, being transparent, right? And also I think we feel bad that that's come out that way. So I think that's why the steps now are, we now want to work with the community to say, "Okay, if the light doesn't work, what can those steps be?" So that's, holy, that's what we're coming. We don't want it, we're not putting any, we're not quashing any ideas right now, we're not supporting anything.
Yeah, please, Mr. Pruitt, my apologies. I did not mean for those questions to go across as a, as an effort to dismiss any ideas. Simply, I'm just trying to see what feedback our engineering can give us about these specific things as they're coming up. Because I want to make sure that, that the answers are close to when the questions are asked as we're going through this process. And again, this is an iterative process, there's no decisions being made right this moment, so.
Yeah, yeah, and, and just to add on to that, we're speaking about roundabouts generally, this isn't a, hey, we've looked at Main Street and the roundabout doesn't work, but there are aspects of it that you do have to consider. If we install a roundabout, how does it impact pedestrians? How does it impact cyclists? How does it impact the general public?
That might get their home taken out.
Steve, you didn't come across that way. I just saw him making some comments, so I just wanted to clarify that that can still be addressed down the road, so. Perfect, thanks Bryce. Okay, one more comment, I think.
Hi, I'm Katie Palmer, no relation that I know of.
Are you sure? We'll look that up after.
I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page that, that we're talking about the intersection as a whole being unsafe, not just safe route for children walking to school. I do not have any children going to Silver Crest, but I have been in that intersection and myself have witnessed three very close calls. One just two weeks ago. And that's, that's my main concern. Would I love to turn out of my neighborhood easier? Sure. But I don't think this is really about, you know, do we need to put a barrier in so we can't turn left? I think our main concern is anybody crossing that intersection across Harriman Main. And I know one of the problems, if we, if we are talking about safe walking routes, is the middle school kids. So they, I leave my house at 7:35 and just the other day, I saw a middle school kid on their bike getting ready to ride across the intersection, they pressed the light, a truck barely stopped in time, right in front of our eyes, car full of kids. We were all like, huh, you know, it scared us to death. And I've heard a lot of parents say that they've seen similar. So those middle school kids are crossing at that intersection at 7:30, 7:45. They're not going down to Black Locust and crossing over and getting school that way. Also, coming home, the middle school gets out at 3 o'clock. The elementary school gets out at 3:05. By the time the elementary kids make that new walking route and over, middle school kids aren't taking that walking route. That's not what they're told to do. So they cross at the flashing lights again. So it's just a really congested area, especially when school gets out, because you have middle school kids crossing where they're not supposed, or maybe they are supposed to be, I don't know, but the other kids crossing the other way too. So just something to consider and I appreciate you guys working with us as a community.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you. You know, that's the other downside of all the potential solutions we make is that there's still people who do stupid things.
Okay, my name is Sheri Rogers and I'm actually going to kind of pick up where Katie just left off because I've noticed the same thing with middle school kids, that there's an elementary school crossing guard crossing across from Silver Crest over by the restaurant while the middle school kids are taking the old crosswalk, which is no longer a zebra stripe crosswalk, which I find very dangerous. So those kids are not going all the way around like they should be. I would propose and I would hope that we could reinstall the 20 mile an hour school zone along that stretch. You know, start it at Black Locust and then have it go through the Harriman Rose intersection. I know originally when I brought this up during the open house, they said that confuses drivers. They can't have a 20 mile an hour speed zone and a traffic signal. I've found multiple instances of this downtown in Salt Lake, also 6200 South, 2700 West. They have a traffic signal, a pedestrian skybridge, and a 20 mile an hour school zone. Also, just a couple of blocks away at the elementary school, I think it's Calvin Smith Elementary, same thing, all three at the same intersection. So I think it can be done. One thing I've noticed, the kids are now walking along in the gutters on Harriman Main Street. So if you've got cars going 35 miles an hour, that's much more dangerous than if the cars maybe were slowed down to 20 miles an hour and you've got those kids riding in the gutter. They go in the gutter because the walk isn't wide enough. So if they're on their scooters and bikes, they go in the gutter to pass the kids who are walking. I've seen that so many times and it's terrifying to me. So I think even if we can just slow the traffic down all along Harriman Main Street, I think that would make it safer overall and it would help the middle school kids as they're crossing too. And maybe bring back the zebra stripes. And maybe it's confusing because it's no longer a school route, but school kids use that consistently. Another question I have that maybe someone can help is why was it decided to put a light at Black Locust rather than Harriman Main when that road seems to be not as busy?
Can I ask you a question, Sheri?
Sure.
Before you sit down? When you observe these middle school kids crossing right there, because I believe there's still that little thing that can push the, get the lights to flash, do they activate that? Do they participate in that at all?
No, I think they do activate it.
So you see those flashing when they're going?
Yeah, and even other times during the day, like when kids are going over to the rec center. I think most people who go through that intersection do activate those lights, which makes it safer for sure. During, like when the sun's going down, it's really hard to see those lights. So like that, you know, between 5:00 and 7:00, I mean, depends on time of year. But that can be dangerous because it's really hard to see those lights at that time, so.
I'm glad that...
But the kids are using them.
Oh, good, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think that's good, yeah.
Thank you, Sheri. Okay.
David would like to make another comment. Do we have any?
You're okay, we want to hear, you're okay.
We're good.
I mean, we're good, we're not...
I just have a couple more questions.
You didn't yell at us. If you had yelled at us before, we may have not have let you stand back up.
No, 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 be quick. One was actually a follow-up to what she just asked. Are the stoplights at Black Lotus and, what's the other one, Fort Harriman, those two, those two intersections, are they warranted? That's what I'm curious about. That's one question. The other question is, I know, you know, there's been talk about a future meeting to discuss all this with the community. How will that be communicated?
Through Teddy. No, we'll find a good way to reach out. We will, we'll absolutely find a good way, so. And I will say, sorry, Gabe, before you stand up, sorry. We get this question a lot, right? Why the lights are out here? Like, I can't, the, if I'm just being kind of blunt, I don't know. Like, that happened before a lot of us, even on staff that was here. I don't like blaming, you've heard me talk, I don't like blaming previous, I don't like that. It's not my place to judge what they were doing. Like, at this point, we have to look today forward, right? I get it, I get the question. I can't look back, right? I just can't. We're not gonna, we will never spend taxpayer money, I'm just being honest, we will never spend taxpayer money to take this light down and move it. We just, that would be an expense that would, it would be, it would literally be millions of dollars, right? So it's just, that's why we're trying to do what we're doing now. We have to just look forward, right? It's easy to look back and say, and we could look back at a lot of decisions made, not just here but everywhere, and question them, right? But I think as a council, we're trying to say, what are our options moving forward? If that, again, I'm not trying to, I have no idea and we could get into that later, but I just, it's, I'm just being real that it's not gonna, we're not going to tear down one light to move it. We just have to move forward at this point with what we have right now, if that makes sense, so. Gabe, go ahead, sorry.
Just one, one quick thing, no, because I think this, this goes into it. So with, with what David said and Cheristy and Lacey, you guys expressed this too, right, is, are people getting involved in the meetings they should be involved in, having input when they should have it through these processes, right? That is probably the single biggest frustration I know that we share as members of the city council, is the lack of engagement and involvement when we, you know, we have notices, we have websites, we have public information things you can subscribe to, we put it on the bulletin boards, we post individually on social media about important meetings that come up. I mean, we're, we're talking about budgets or tax increases and there's less people here when we're talking about tax increases than there are when we're talking about an intersection, right? It's really hard to get people to engage. That being said, we have, as the mayor said, we've all taken it personally to try and do everything we can to improve communication. I mean, just this back and forth dialogue was prohibited just a couple of years ago in city policy about public comment. We've worked hard to amend that so that we can hear and give feedback, which before we couldn't do. We've changed it so that we can have public comment when we're discussing the topic rather than it to be, you know, have it such disjointed. So we're doing everything we can as a council to help improve that communication. We need to make sure that the community's getting engaged with us because it does have an impact and it shapes the decisions that we make and the way that we look at things. So we're going to do our best to, to announce and communicate to everybody that we want to have these meetings. Please spread the word, help and get, invite your friends and come out and be a part of those conversations, so.
Sorry to interrupt your time either, but I would just echo a little bit what Steve said and I guess, and I can understand what the mayor is saying for feeling bad about communication, but in reality, it's, it, we're not involved in that process as a city council. It goes, it goes through the administrators, just like was explained before, it goes through the police department, the administrators, the engineering department, who's the other one?
School district.
School district. So they all sign off on that. And we assume that those processes are going along and that you guys are involved in that, right? You didn't know about your community council because a lot of people just simply don't know how the process works, right? And so it's easy to be angry at the city council for, "Why are you guys making this change?" And it's like, I don't know what you're talking about, right? And so it's like, but the intent here is when you bring a concern to, to us, I think for me, the, an issue is always the safety of our residents, right? Especially our children. But I think it's a bigger issue than just the, the crossing, the crosswalk. I go in that intersection too. My, my granddaughter has a best friend that lives just on that street, so I have to use that intersection, right, and the left turns and all that also many times. So I can absolutely appreciate the, the, okay, I'm holding my breath, I'm going now, I think I have time, kind of feeling sometimes turning in and out of those. So I think our intent is to, we appreciate it being brought forward to us, that we can engage in the process. But our intent was never to not have a good communication process, nor do I think our staff ever goes through that, or our police department. It's just the process that goes through and then people get a little bit blindsided because they don't understand the process, so they're not in the know with what's going on. So I, I would just say kudos to Katie and Lacey for going, "Okay, I want to be involved. I'm going to get involved in that community council so I can have a voice and, and be in that circle to help make those decisions for our community." So thanks for being involved in that. And thanks for bringing it to our attention so we can do what we can do to try and help.
We won't interrupt you now, Gabe, go ahead. It's all you now.
Wait, wait.
How old is Gavin?
Eleven.
Eleven? I love it. I'm impressed. It's hard to pay attention in a meeting like this for that long. You're doing well, man.
I try to, I try to look up to him. All right, so you guys give me the two minutes, I look, I was like, if you give me two minutes in a football game and if I have Tom Brady, you know, you know what the end result is. I'm going down the field, right, then I have Lauren Palmer throw a flag out here to bail me out. No, I was like, anyways, I was talking, you said that just there, Lauren, was the light on Black Locust, you know, whether it's warranted, it's going to be before your time, you know, you can't be blamed. No, it says, and I was thinking like, well, if that light, we already got the equipment there, it'd be moved down there, you know, it says, and then you can, how I said, you can smitten that one off because there's nothing that irritates you more. Like you brought up, road rage and stuff is when you come up to that light, turns red and then you're, and then the other side, somebody comes up, makes a right turn, makes it go red, they just make a right and then you're, so you wait and then the green arrow goes the other way and you're still waiting and nobody was in the left turn lane. You're like, really? You're like, what a point light, you know, so. And then after you get through that, the next one turns red too, right? So anyways, I said it, 650 feet one way for the kids out of the neighborhood, coming back 1,300 feet, right about there, which Tom Brady's only thrown 14 400 yard passing games in his whole career. So that you're asking the kids in three weeks to do basically what Tom Brady's greatest games were his whole career, you know, so. They're obviously walking way more than the greatest quarterback ever played. I think I would vote for having those lights just moved down there, it's going to help coming out of that rec center. Even if, I don't care if you have the eagle lights that go over, I see it on Bacchus Highway and stuff, that's a highway for, you know, sakes up there and they have the big eagle, whatever the eagle eyes or something up there for the kids crossing like the Cypress High School area, you know, when I come home, so. That was about, that was about it, that was just what I was thinking, is the light roundabout might be too big. I don't know, you guys will have to do that study.
Right.
Other than that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks for putting into my terms, sports terms always help me, so. I like it. Yeah, sure, come on up. You're good, Lacey.
I just want, my husband knows not to bring this subject up because I get all, but I just want to reiterate, we really appreciate you guys addressing the issue and even being willing to do the warrant study. I don't think we want a light there if it doesn't warrant it either. We don't want something that's gonna make it even more unsafe. So I just want to say thank you. Our whole purpose was to see what options are open for everyone in the discussion, and I think that's why Chersey and I are getting involved, as we see the lack of communication, and we're like, we could have addressed this in May, instead of school already starting. So that's kind of where we see that, is we see a need, and we're like, well, let's make that different, and we just want to open communication that way. And then just with that meeting, on the safe walking route thing, it says that a route can be changed mid-school year. So the timing of that, the sooner that can happen, because maybe there's options that could make it more viable, that people could still cross there. And then just, like they said, I think with the warrant study, I was more alert and paying more attention to what cars were doing during the time. And it's just, I think just a lack of, people are just cruising through, you know what I mean? And it's just not aware, so I don't know if it's looking at something higher, I don't know what the answer is, and I think that's why we're just trying to say, let's all come together. When the news people came, this guy interviewed me forever, and the one comment he took was, I can't, I'm losing sleep, which I took really offensively. Because the one thing he asked me, he said, do you place blame anywhere? And I think he was hoping for drama. And he wa, and I said, should I place blame somewhere? And afterwards, he's like, well, some people blame the city, and I want you to know that I don't think any of us blame one place. I think we just see that there's a need, and we all know that we need to work together to find the right solution.
I appreciate that. And I will say too, John, here to my left, took a lot of heat from that same interview. Same thing, this, I'm sorry, I'll put it on the record, John, he took an, out of content, he took the comment about, and it wasn't even in, he knew that our concern wasn't about, it wasn't convenience, right? But of course, he mentioned that one time in a different, and he took that. So just, please spread that back to your neighbors. John is the best PIO around, and he did not, he knew it wasn't about convenience, so just pass that back too, so.
He's not an angry person, and he took his one, like, angry comment.
Right. Yeah.
There was an agenda there to create drama, but.
Yep.
It would be welcome to being interviewed. It's always how it goes. I should back up and, and tell you also that when there are issues coming up, that, that there's some rumblings, our staff, our police department, is always good to reach out to council and say, hey, heads up, we know this isn't, you know, in your purview, that you guys aren't making these decisions, but this is, this is, there's some rumblings going on here. So we were aware that there was some concern, but certainly not to the level of your frustration for your communication. But, but I think it just takes all of us to, you know, it's like easy to say, you didn't tell me, but it's like, I have to find out, right? I did the same thing, I'm on the city council, because I was super mad that this dang city didn't tell me that they were doing this developer right next to my house, right? But I didn't ask the questions either, right? So it just takes all of us, it was like I was trying to explain to Gavin, it just takes all of us to try and figure out, and I think this is how we do it, just collaboratively, working together.
This is awesome. I mean, the, the amount of interact, gosh, if all of our city council meetings could have this kind of level of interaction with the community members we're elected to represent, I mean, it'd be so much better. Look, these meetings are long and boring, and certain members of the council just keep talking and talking, and they won't shut up. But, but the engagement, the back and forth, the communication is really what we strive for. So when you guys are here, and our ability to, to give you feedback, to ask questions, to do that, I hope you guys are understanding our sincerity about, we're so glad that we're having the conversation, just as much as you are. And so we're, we're looking forward to doing what the next steps are. This is, this is definitely gonna be a process, not an event, right? So we're gonna keep working at it, we're gonna keep figuring it out, we're gonna keep trying things, we're gonna keep looking at different ideas, and, and we'll figure something out.
Not to minimize us either, but I know, was getting blasted the other day about the intersection by Smiths, 5600 and all that. So, I mean, there's just so many, just like you were saying before, but it does not take away the importance of your intersection, right? There's just a lot to consider, but they're all important.
Okay. Last thing I'm gonna say, I'm sorry, I'm such a people, like, I like, I'm all about people, I'm gonna say this. Lady in my ward, I go to church with, sorry, is one of the crossing guards here at this intersection. She almost broke down to me at church, because she feels like she's getting some of the blame now. So if you guys are crossing there this week and help spread, walk up, seriously, walk up and hug those crossing guards, because I think they're feeling kind of, you know, at the heart of this, and they're just, they're just employees that are just doing their job. So walk by, give them a hug, let them know how much you appreciate them, because they don't get, we don't pay them enough, honestly, we don't, they don't make enough. They're out there in all the elements, you know, so just walk by, give them a little gift bag or something, and just tell them thank you, because our crossing guards do. I mean, put their lives, they truly put their lives on the line every day for what they do, and, you know, it's hard to not feel like, you know, sometimes like you're being appreciated, and you're maybe in the crosshairs of something that's not your fault, so. That's just my little soapbox for a minute, so. Give them a hug, don't tell them I told you to do that, they'll make it, just make it awkward.
It'd be a big secret, they wouldn't watch it.
So. Okay, Bryce, you don't need anything from us, right? You don't need anything, we're just direction to move forward, and we'll talk to the community and plan that, right? Do you need direction?
So the one thing, the recommendation was to set up these meetings.
Okay.
But either, so you can all come, it would probably be cleaner if you appointed two to kind of represent your interests at those
Okay.
meetings. So what I envision, this being more series of tables where people are sitting around talking about it, because I've heard multiple different concerns.
Yeah.
And I think we need to understand all the concerns out of that neighborhood. And so, you know, it's really hard when somebody says, that's not a safe intersection, and then somebody else says, it should be a school crossing. I, I have a hard, I don't think I can, in good conscience, cross people there.
As it, as it is currently.
And so we need, we need to talk about, what does that look like? And, and there's been some options put out today, and I think that's what we would like to just talk through.
Okay.
With the, with the neighbors there.
If I nominate Teddy, should we nominate Jared too, since he's not here?
Nominate Jared, I think we nominate Steve, yes, that's a question.
You want me and Teddy to sit on that, then?
It's up to you all. You, you, Teddy's not here, so appointing him, it is his area, probably makes the most sense.
Right. Okay, Teddy says he wants, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead, Teddy.
And you're good to be on that committee, right?
Let me and Teddy run with it, that committee, or do you want, do you want to be on it? I'm not.
You know, I, I represent the council on the traffic committee.
Might be good to have you on it.
And I'm, I mean, I'm happy to be a part of it, but I think I can still be involved being as part of the traffic committee.
Okay.
If I'm not involved, but I'll leave it up to you guys. Meaning I can, I can still talk with the traffic committee and, and engineers and everybody about some creative ideas and different things that are being discussed, and some of the pros and cons and stuff.
I'm not a big fan of nominating myself for more stuff, but are you guys okay? I'll just recommend Teddy and I.
I completely support you nominating yourself for that kind of stuff.
Me too.
Okay, we'll go that direction then. So, what's that? A hundred percent.
Absolutely. Yeah. The idea is that city staff will be there to work out, and changing this a little bit from a meeting where we just give you information, we want to have some back and forth, talking about some of the options that have been put out there, say, roundabout gentleman left, but I built several of those, I'd like to have a conversation about those kinds of options with people. And so you'll have city staff there, the engineers and the council, and it might be one meeting, it might be more than one, but if we can come up with a solution that we think addresses most of the concerns. And I say most, because there's probably not anything that addresses everything.
Yeah, for sure.
Perfect.
And whatever we address, it'll create another concern, for sure.
Yeah, probably will.
There'll be different residents in here complaining about that decision.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody. Thank you for your input tonight and your involvement along the way, and truly in the professional way you handled this, we don't have any, this is, this is great. There's no concerns about you being here, I promise, that's not, we don't take this personal. I think it was Mayor Freeman that really, few mayors before me, that said, issues are issues and people are people, right? And so at the end of the day, we're just, we recognize that you brought up issues, and it's not personal. We're just, we signed up to be in these seats and deal with these hard issues, and.
Except Teddy, sometimes the person is the used.
And Gavin, we know one day you're gonna be sitting up here instead of us. Good job, buddy.
You're eligible in seven years, so.
Well done.
Put that in perspective. Okay, thank you again for being here. I don't want to belabor this anymore. So we're gonna move on to item 8.2, discussion regarding 138th South Roadway Improvements. Bryce?
Yeah, Bryce, you're.
It's the Bryce Show now.
Are you sick of me yet? All right, so, yeah, this is just a quick update on 138th South, and I believe Mayor kind of talked about this on our last harrimanology podcast. But I was just asked to give an update. So 138th South, this is near Mountain Ridge High School, if you know where the area is. So Mountain View's on the left there in the screen. Sentinel Ridge Boulevard is that middle road that comes up, and then comes up to 134th, and then if you continue into Riverton, that's Mountain View Village, that's on the other side of 134th. If you continue south, eventually you hit Rosecrest Road. And then going to the east, there's a canal there, you can kind of see it, it's not that big water, but there's a skinny little canal, yeah, yep, right along there, that we call Welby Jacobs Canal, and that's actually the border. So in this case, the border of 138th, the horizontal road, the east-west road we're looking at, is split. On the west side of the canal, so the area that's boxed, the south side's in Harriman, the north side's in Riverton. So this is a split road. And then east of the canal, it is split between Riverton on the north side still, but it switches to Bluffdale on the, on the south side. So with that said, there's a lot of parties involved in, in this project. So the portion from Sentinel Ridge, that's in Red West, to Mountain View Corridor was built and intended to be operational before this, this school year, and that was completed. So now, coming from the high school, or this new elementary school, Juniper Elementary, traffic can come out and come out to Mountain View and turn right onto Mountain View. It's not a full intersection, you can't go south, but you can turn right onto going north. So that was completed, that was curb gutter sidewalk, and, yeah, widening the road. The road didn't exist in any form in, on that side of the road. And then switching over to the east side, the blue rectangle, this, this trailed a little bit behind that, because the priority was to get this in before school to accommodate some school traffic and flow and pedestrian walkways. And then in the blue, this was recently completed, at the end of September, this section was built to the canal, and actually was completed, pavement, sidewalk. There's a raised crosswalk actually here to slow people down, but also to have people pay attention. There's now a trail connection from, you can kind of see it in the picture, on the right bottom corner of that blue rectangle, there's an asphalt trail there. So that now comes up, and there is a flashing lights, like the one by Silver Crest, to cross the road, and a raised crosswalk to slow people down. And then that trail will continue going north. So that was completed at the end of September, and by completed, I'll clarify what that means. And then we were hoping to, well, we were waiting to open the road going east of the canal. The plan was to wait until the traffic signal, which is what we're calling that, that blue circle there, was completed. That, that was our original goal from the Harriman side. So it, that was completed on October 11th. We were kind of shooting, knowing that there was a, a closure coming on the 134th Bangater Project. So that was our, our goal. As we, as we started getting closer and closer to that date, we started hearing more and more of the concern from the neighboring communities that they weren't ready to open their portion of the road. With the new traffic, there were some concerns that they wanted to address before opening the road to go east. So the Harriman section's all built, but there's barriers on the east side of that canal that prevent currently vehicles to go east, or coming from the east to go west at that point. And those, there were concerns with the added traffic, the amount of speed that would be on the road. They wanted to do some upgrades and some, some work on the existing portion of 138th, a little further east, to address some of the, the concerns that, that the residents in those cities had that live along this road, that would now be introduced with a bunch of new traffic and new speeds. So they, they asked to hold off opening or removing the barriers until they could address some of those concerns, have some public meetings like, like we've discussed. And they are, their goal and our goal is that by next week, we'll be able to remove those barriers and open the road, and it'll be open all the way. That's the goal from them. Like I said, from the Harriman side, we're all done, we're just waiting from the AOK from the, the east side, so. Other than that, I can give any, any more updates or answer any questions.
We appreciate it.
Great. What, what day next week?
Yeah, Monday's what they're shooting for, 28th.
28th, right?
Yep. Yep, correct.
And they did send a letter out to their residents, letting them know they committed that seven-day, and so that's gone out to their residents, so they, once it went out to their residents, I'm sure it'll go.
Yay!
So.
You're sure?
Yay for us.
I'm not sure, but I'm, that's what.
Okay, thank you.
It'll be, thanks, Bryce.
Anything to alleviate some of the traffic on 126th would be good.
Mayor Staggs would ask me to let everybody know that it's not a designated detour. The detour is to 126th. But you can still use it. Okay. Look to item, move on to item nine, the consent agenda, look for a motion on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve this consent agenda as written.
Second.
By Sherri, second by Steve. Steve?
Yes.
Sherri?
Yes.
Teddy? Jared? I don't know what, yes, that motion carries. Final item tonight, 10.1, discussion regarding the concerns with the design of the Mountain View Corridor ramp locations. Like?
Bryce could have done this one too, so I should have given it to him.
He could have too.
He can have all the fun, though. So we've been working with the UDOT design team, they're designing Mountain View Corridor. The location here, you can see highlighted in yellow, is the section from Porter Rockwell to the north, all the way to Old Bingham Highway. The design's underway for the freeway portion, which runs between the frontage roads, which exist today. And then they'll put bridges in at all the major crossroads, and that's all in design. But the area we're talking about, area of concern, is a little bit more on the south end, near Real Vista Drive or Juniper Crest, and a little bit north and a little bit south of there. There was a memo in the packet, so hopefully everybody was able to read that. This exhibit was in that memo. And just kind of giving a little background information, the original design came from UDOT in around 2010, 2012, that timeframe. They had designed the, the frontage roads and had a concept for the freeway section. And with that, they had an idea of where the off-ramps would be located. And that design had the off-ramp on the south end, having people exit on the southbound lanes immediately north of Juniper Crest or Real Vista Drive. And, and then as we've worked, as we went forward with that concept, we had land planned and put in infrastructure and approved developments. And I fixed that in that slide, that should say developments, but it didn't say for some reason. So you can see in the, the bottom right corner of the, the image, that we've had, we have the community college, the first phases of that are completed. We have the RSL Training Academy in, in operation, we have Academy Village Commercial Center. We have some future commercial areas, and we have designed everything and planned everything, so that the primary access for these land uses are off of Real Vista Drive. Since then, as we've worked with the design team for the freeway, they have modeled some of the traffic and identified that the ramp should be located for the southbound traffic, south of Real Vista Drive. And so there, as we've worked with them, we've, we raised some concerns, we asked them to move the ramp. Some of our concerns are that the nearest northbound ramp is just immediately south of 13400 South. So traffic trying to get to Real Vista Drive will have to travel south on the frontage road after they exit, and take the frontage road through Rosecrest. road after they exit, and take the frontage road through Rosecrest and down to Juniper Crest, or they would miss the off-ramp altogether, have to go up to Academy here, all the way down to Academy, and turn around or route through the city streets. Our concern is if they route through the city streets, if they miss it, they'll have to come down Academy Parkway, if you've been down there. The road has walls on each side, and it's elevated as it comes off of Mountain View, and with that traffic volume, it's anticipated that road would need to be widened, and widening would be very expensive with the walls, millions of dollars. So that's one of our concerns. It, it also puts the traffic in a, in a place that we never anticipated. So we worked with the design team, asked them to move the ramp, they ran some analysis, several different scenarios, and they came back and denied our request. So this image shows what their current design is. You can see Juniper Crest on the right-hand side of the screen, Academy, and they show the off-ramp south. And so with our inability to get the design team to change the design, we're asking the city council to please reach out to your representatives that you work with at the legislature, maybe business partners in the area, to have them reach out to UDOT and request that this ramp be moved. The cost to move the ramp was between five and six million dollars. They had two options, one was that much, one was closer to 10 million. The reason is Juniper Canyon is a little bit to the north, and that will require some improvements to that structure, to have the ramp come off and have the room to, to weave into the traffic. But those costs are minor compared to the total cost of the project, and probably less than what we would have to pay to widen the roadway and do the improvements if they put the ramp in this place. It would put the burden on the city, where UDOT could solve the problem upfront now for a small fraction of their project cost. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but that's just the presentation.
I have a question. So, so do you have any idea, like, what it would cost the city to do what you're just talking about? Like, if they're five to six million, changing it, I mean, we're gonna be substantially more than that, I would guess.
I haven't ran the exact numbers, but the money that we've put into infrastructure, I mean, we've, we've built Real Vista wide, and if we take that traffic off, we've, we've spent more than $5 million on the roads, and we'll spend more than that.
Yeah, you'd be putting it down on Academy Parkway instead of on Real Vista Drive, or we designed it to go.
Right.
Yeah, if they would've had the ramp here, we would've land planned and, and designed everything that way.
Right, and it was designed based on some preliminary stuff that they had originally proposed?
Yeah, they have it online right now. If you go to the UDOT Mountain View Corridor interactive map, you can pull that up, and there's a bar you can slide left and right, and it shows the existing configuration, and then if you slide it, it'll show the future configuration. It currently shows the ramp where we had always anticipated it.
Yeah, I think, I think that's good. I, I think that gives us some good information. I just think that's such a huge waste of taxpayer money. Understand the five to six million, it's gonna cost them additional, but it's already been spent by our taxpayers, and then you want to ask our city taxpayers to again, spend even more than that to correct, to change something that they already put out there? That doesn't make any sense.
Or they would come back and, and move the ramp and spend more than what they would do now to move that ramp.
Yeah.
So it just seems like if we could catch it now and put it in the right place now, we could save everybody, save taxpayer money and do the right thing.
For sure.
So the question was, should we have the, should we take a point of, or a position on this, that the ramp should be moved?
Yes.
Yeah, that's...
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry, I should've been more clear on that.
Just want to make sure, yes. Yes, it should be moved.
And internally, we just need to figure out how we want to do that, if we want to send a letter, however you want to approach that.
I would recommend we send a letter to everybody, you know, to all our delegation, and then probably some phone calls.
Yeah, and so if you can help us with, with numbers, I think that that's good to tell the story, to say, you know, we, we preserve this right of way at this type of expense, and, you know, those types of things, the impact that we really have on our taxpayers, to try and rectify that, because we did it based off information that was provided by them.
And in speaking with our business partners that are in this area, the ones that have Academy Parkway and the ones that are coming, it is very concerning to them, so they have a lot of interest in having the ramp where they'd always planned on as well.
For sure.
Is Wasatch involved with reaching out as well? Are they gonna...
I don't know if they are yet. We haven't reached out and really expressed this concern. We wanted to present it to the council first, make sure we were all on the same page with it.
Yeah, I think, I think we need, yeah, and I'd get a good letter that would help them, you know, explain the financials behind all that, too.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Blake. Okay, that brings us to the close of our meeting tonight. Future meetings, our next planning commission meeting is in two weeks, on the 6th. We will have a special meeting next, city council is gonna have a special meeting at 5:30, 5:30 next Wednesday.
5:30?
To go over one agenda item, there's just gonna be one agenda.
That'd be downstairs, I reckon.
That'd be downstairs? In Fort, Fort Harriman Camp, so it'll be next week. Then we'll have another city council meeting on the 13th. Election Day is coming up, please vote on the 5th. And we have a senior social on Thursday, the 7th, at, here at City Hall at 11 o'clock. Any other stuff coming up? I think we're done. Event season's over, so I think we're, okay. With that, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Say it.